It's six P M. And I call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the product of the United States of America and to the product of which it stands on the nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as
Mr. Matthews, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Assistant Chief McCarty, will you please proceed with the reading of casualties?
Good evening, Board. First responder casualties for the period of December fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, through December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Police Officer Jacob Kendoza, DeTaro Police Department in Texas, end of watch December eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Police Officer Hiro Rodriguez, Newark Police Division, New Jersey, end of watch December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Sergeant Rick Finley with the McNary County Sheriff's Office, Tennessee, end of watch December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and Corporal Elo Diaz with the Charlotte County Sheriff's Office in Florida, end of watch December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence for these first responders. Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation by Assistant Chief James McCarty in advance of the chief's retirement ceremony on December thirtieth. Assistant Chief McCarty, please proceed
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight as we celebrate and honor Chief Charlie Stegelmeyer during his well-deserved retirement after forty-three years of dedicated service. Chief, as we reflect on your remarkable career, I am reminded of what a wise man once said. A police officer is issued two badges. One is pinned to his chest just above his heart, signifying that the officer must use his heart to show compassion while leading and serving the people. The second badge is placed on his hat, signifying that officers must use their head to make good, clear, unbiased decisions. Throughout your tenure, you've exemplified this profound balance these badges symbolize. You led with your heart, ensuring compassion and care for the forefront of every decision, and your head demonstrating exceptional wisdom and judgment and unwavering integrity in navigating the complexities of modern policing. Your servant leadership has been the cornerstone of your success. You showed us all that leadership is not rank or authority. It's about lifting others, listening, and creating a culture where everyone can thrive. You empowered your officers to embody the values of empathy, accountability, and professionalism in their work and daily interactions with the community. Under your guidance, the Miami Township Police Department has flourished. You understood the importance of embracing innovation and with the department, making the department more efficient, transparent, and accountable. You brought us to the twenty-fourth century with vision and enhanced our ability to serve and protect. But Chief, your legacy extends far beyond technology. Your true impact lies in the relationship you build with and trust you fostered. You prioritize community policing, understanding the trust and collaboration is the foundation of a safe, thriving community. Through outreach programs, neighborhood partnerships, and community events, you strengthened the bond between the department and the people we serve, ensuring that we were seen not just as enforcers of the law, but as allies and partners. You are a steady and reassuring presence in moments of crisis and uncertainty. Whether managing critical incidents, mentoring the next generation of officers, or simply taking the time to listen, you led with strength, humility, and unwavering commitment in doing what is right. As you prepare to step to the next chapter of your life, we celebrate a career defined by vision, compassion, and dedication to service. Your influence will be felt for years to come, not only in the policies and programs you've established, but the lives you've touched and the trust you've built. On behalf of the Miami Township Police Department, the community, and everyone gathered here tonight, we thank you for your extraordinary leadership, unwavering commitment, and your friendship. Chief, you have left a legacy that will inspire and guide us for generations. Congratulations on an extraordinary career. May your retirement be filled with happiness, health, and the knowledge that you have made a lasting difference in the lives of so many. Thank you.
All right. One last thing I would like to formally present you with, your Retirement Service Award. The reward reads, Chief Charlie Stegelmeyer, with sincere appreciation for six years of service, September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, through December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, you have earned the respect and admiration of all members of the R Department.
All right. Well, counsel, you know for a fact that I'm not going to let you go one last day without me at least having something to say. For those of you that know me, I have a big exterior. I'm a rough exterior guy, but really I have a big soft, big old teddy bear. Don't tell it to me to be let, especially don't tell my wife that, please. This is a very surreal moment in my life. As I stand before you all, the reality of my career ending is upon me. I didn't think it was going to be this hard. It's hard to believe forty-three years have come and gone. For those of you who wondered why I chose December thirtieth to retire, rest assured, this was no coincidence. For December thirtieth is my birthday, but it's also the day that I graduated the police academy back in nineteen eighty-one. So really, that's kind of like a circle of life for me. It's come full circle. During my career, I've had a blast. I'm going to tell you, I've had opportunities. I've been a police officer on the street. I was a K-9 officer. I was a SWAT team member. I got to be an undercover narcotics agent. Got to be a supervisor. And I've actually seen and done things that people have only seen or even heard about on TV. I have been blessed to experience policing at the local, the state, and the federal level, all of which will be outlined in the book I plan on publishing as soon as the statute of limitations are done. And yes, Todd, I will change names to protect the innocent, okay? I had some of the best times of my life. I've also had some of the worst times of my life during my career. I've experienced life's everyday challenges and everyday circus from a front row seat to the greatest show on earth. As a rookie, I came into law enforcement thinking I could change the world, and I think we all had that. Now, as a seasoned veteran, I'm leaving law enforcement realizing that it's impossible to change the entire world. But I found solace in myself knowing that I was able to change just a small corner, my corner, of the world. For that, I'm very grateful. Here's a part of the struggle. So bear with me. I have made lifelong friends, and I've lost lifelong friends. To the friends I've lost along the way. Officer Chris Clyte, Detective George Del Rio, Deputy Suzanne Hopper, thank you for touching my life and making the ultimate sacrifice for the citizens you swore to protect. We had some great times of working together, and one day, someday soon, not too soon, I hope, I can't wait till we'll see each other again and share some of the smiles and laughter we did in prior times. To those I've worked with, worked for, and supervised, I hope that I was able to make a difference in your career and your life. I hope that I was a good mentor and was able to teach the meaning of a true servant leadership. Because to serve and protect is why I became a police officer. I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for having the faith in me to lead this great law enforcement agency. I'd like to thank the Township Administrator, Chris Snyder. Thank you for all your guidance and support through your tenure with me at the Police Department. To the other department's heads, Alex, John, Clay, Penny's not present, but plenty of Penny as well, thank you for all our support and help throughout my tenure here as well. To the citizens of Miami Township and the Business District of Miami Township, thank you for your graciousness and generous support. In a time when it's tough to be a police officer, you've shown compassion and support to the officers of this department, and for that, I'm eternally grateful. To the officers of Miami Township, thank you for allowing me to be your leader. Why we may not have always agreed, we've always held each other's back, and we've always done the police thing. To my command staff, James, Eric, my new command staff, Suzie, the leader of us all, thank you for your guidance, your support, and your friendship. I'm going to miss our morning talks, but most important thing I'm going to miss is our daily ritual of watching The Price is Right. I'm going to conclude my little bit longer speech than normal tonight with three closing things. Number one, being a police officer is what we do, but it is not who we are. Please don't ever forget that. Number two, always do the right thing, because simply doing the right thing is always the right thing to do. And finally, the last one, which over the years, I think, I've found to be the most important. Do what you love. Love what you do. And if any time in your career that changes, it's time for you to make a change. I want to say God bless each and every one of you. God bless this Police Department.
I have a short statement I'd like to read, and then I'll dismiss everyone who's here for Chief Stegelmeyer's retirement so that they can go downstairs and celebrate. Chief Stegelmeyer, I would like to congratulate you on your retirement after forty-three years in law enforcement. It is no small undertaking to stick with a career in law enforcement, given the challenges that police officers face on a daily basis, but we thank you for your dedication to this profession. I know that you have always been dedicated to service and protecting the community. Miami Township thanks you for your efforts to modernize the department and bringing the latest programs to improve efficiency while maintaining our professional standards through our KLEA accreditation. We wish you well in your next steps and hope you will always think fondly on the many lives that you have positively impacted throughout your career. And I personally appreciate the relationship we've had over the last few years, Chief Stegelmeyer, and I wish you the best. Thank you. You may now be excused, if you wish, to go downstairs and... Are there any questions on the consent agenda? I motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Snyder, you have Resolutions one-ten, one-eleven, one-twelve, and one-thirteen, two thousand and twenty-four.
All right. Good evening, Board. Start with Resolution one-ten, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a resolution to authorize an agreement for Chief Technology, Chief Information Security Officer Consultation Services. We've been utilizing Waypoint Cybersecurity for the last year to assist us in upgrades to our information technology network, as well as to review our security protocols related to I T. We've had a very good working relationship with Waypoint this last twelve months. Myself and Finance Director, Fiscal Officer, as well as Eric Priest in my office, have been working diligently through a number of projects this past year, and we do recommend at this time continuing that relationship. Waypoint has offered us a two-year agreement with a fixed no-cost increase over that two years. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to go over that. Resolution one-eleven is a resolution to appoint representatives to Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Board of Directors. Mr. Trustee Berry has indicated a desire to serve on the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, along with myself as the alternate. So if there are no questions on that, we would recommend making those appointments tonight. Along with Resolution one-twelve, which is to appoint members to the Technical Advisory Committee, and that would be appointing Junior Coop with our Public Works Department, as well as Max McConnell with our Community Development Department to that committee with MBRPC. Any questions on that? Our final resolution is Resolution one-thirteen, two thousand and twenty-four. It's a resolution to appoint a Miami Township Community Improvement Corporation Board Member. Again, Trustee Berry has offered graciously to serve on that committee. And at this time, due to the resignation earlier this fall of John Morris, we do have a need to appoint the trustee representative to that committee. So if there are no questions, that's what I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schweitzer, you have Resolution one-fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four.
Good evening, Board. This resolution is an annual item to authorize the Township Administrator to enter into a joint construction agreement with the City of Miami'sburg for resurfacing streets. This has been an advantageous endeavor between both the city and the township to reduce overall construction costs. In two thousand and twenty-four, we had an assessment done through a third party, and it's helping us identify problematic streets and create a long-range plan, which we hope to roll out here soon to the board. But through this, the two thousand and twenty-five plan is to continue the Heritage Glen subdivision that we started this year, do a Lincolnshire section, which is in the villages of Miami, and also including Miami View Park parking lots and Waldrew parking lots. This equates to two-point-five miles of roadway resurfacing. What's also included is Rue La Cour, but that was done earlier this fall as part of a Montgomery County construction agreement. But as we look forward to the future, we are proactively starting a long-range forecast and coinciding with the Community Development Department to optimize our strategic position moving forward. With this resolution, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for two thousand and twenty-five.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Carlson, you have Resolutions one-fifteen, one-sixteen, and one-seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Resolution one-fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four, resolution authorizing Township Administrator to execute an Edge Program Agreement with Montgomery County. For members of the public who are not familiar with the program, Edge Program for Montgomery County is an opportunity for Miami Township to work with businesses who are looking to locate or expand within our community. Allows us to go to Montgomery County and present a case for why their growth is of regional importance. Happy to say that Acceleration LLC, the first tenant down at First Flight Commerce Center, was awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So by meeting their targeted employment projections and targeted expenditures required to upfit that building and get it ready for manufacturing and job growth, once they've affirmed that, Miami Township can act as a pass-through for those funds. Funds come to us. We distribute to Acceleration. So working with Finance Department, we always wait until the funds are coming available before we make that appropriation. It could be three years from now, four years from now, so it's hard to budget. But long story short, this is the first step that will allow us to then execute an agreement with Acceleration to commence the Edge funding cycle. If you have any questions on that one? Thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
Resolution one-sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four, resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District for the Austin East development and project area. Couple images just to remind the Board members of the public kind of what this area is. This is immediately across from Austin Landing, across from Austin, Austin Landing, across from Landing Way. This is an area that I'm sure some of the Board is familiar with. We've been working with a developer on the east side for several years, related to a potential development of several parcels that are completely vacant at the moment. But part of ODOT's requirements for development would be to add signalized access at Landing Way. This is a pretty complicated process involving a transaction of existing ODOT right-of-way for private land controlled to allow for development. With that being said, Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District has been a huge help working through this very complicated process, working through land entitlements, transaction rights that the Township does not have. So this MOU would agree to a couple of things. First and foremost, that the Township will accept up to potentially ten thousand dollars in fees through the TID for their services. One, for past expenses that they have incurred, working toward allowing all this to happen, but also the actual transactional documents to eventually turn the land back over to Miami Township, which was the original intent of ODOT through this project. I will also say that the TID's involvement, working with ODOT, helped secure a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of extra funds coming toward the Township for repaving of the strip road. So to me, it's a pretty good immediate return on investment there, working with the TID. If the Board has any questions on that one? And then finally, let's switch slides again. This is revisiting the Kingsridge Drive redesign project through the Ohio Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program, the HSIP Program. Again, Miami Township was awarded one-point-five million dollars toward the total project of redesigning Kingsridge Drive from State Route seven forty-one all the way down to Lions Ridge Drive. Part of what that includes sidewalks along both sides of the street where there are none today, three mid-block crossings throughout the point-three-mile stretch where today the only way to get across the street is to illegally jaywalk. It's not great. Pedestrian lighting and pedestrian landscaping along the corridor. So this, finally, we're getting to the point now where we can begin the formal engineering. The Community Development Department and the Public Works Department went through the state statutory quality-based selection process to review submittals by various engineering firms. Ultimately, we did select Choice One Engineering as our recommended consultant. Their project proposal came in underneath our original budget for engineering services, so that's a fantastic start. But again, signing this agreement would allow us to begin preliminary engineering and a little bit more of the public outreach process for businesses on Kingsridge, for the education process of sort of how this project will go along. But again, this is really the first very real step now in actually starting this project. So it's been a long time coming, but exciting. So we'd be happy to discuss that as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. McCord, you have Resolutions one-eighteen, one-nineteen, and one-twenty, two thousand and twenty-four.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. Resolution one-eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four is an amendment to the appropriation from the American Rescue Plan Fund, Fund Number two-sixteen. This is the final appropriation before the twelve-thirty-one deadline stipulated in the Act that all those funds had to be appropriated and encumbered prior to the end of two thousand and twenty-four. This takes the remaining hundred and forty thousand year-to-date and puts that appropriation in, so we have now fully appropriated the money that we received over the last three years. And Mr. Schweitzer put together a fairly comprehensive list of things that are going on in the last piece of this, including adding a portion of that funding, the remaining that we couldn't quite come up with a specific project. We put it into road resurfacing for next year. So if there's any questions on that, the next step will be expending all of that. Over the next two years, the deadline to expend all that money that's been appropriated will be December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six. Resolution one-nineteen is similar. It's an adjustment to the capital projects funds that were established a few years ago specifically for infrastructure capital reservation and improvement. What we did is we looked at the amount of funding that had been appropriated throughout the year that was through external grants and other sources were never actually spent out of the treasury for the Township. And we then instead said, all right, let's set that money aside and put it toward our capital improvement projects. We have way more projects to improve on than we actually have cash to pay for it. So this was a contribution, so we adjusted those four funds to be within, without increasing any appropriations for the overall expend for the year. So it was just taking, really just reallocating monies that had already been approved for expenditure.
I have a question about that one.
Okay.
What is the fire levy fund used for?
We're researching that now. With the formation of the district and the district now getting its own funding source, we are in a position of we're not exactly sure statutorily what we can do with those funds. So we put a question to the Law Director, and we can't expend it for anything other than what the levy stipulated at the time the money was approved by the voters. So it's going to sit. We had to move it out of capital projects, so we don't have any capital projects for them right now. And now it's sitting in the levy fund, which is where those monies first landed when they first were presented or given to us by the county auditor.
Okay.
So more to come on that in two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you.
And finally, Resolution one-twenty is the, after one-eighteen and one-nineteen are done, and then we went back and looked at the entire appropriation and the estimated revenues for the entire year of two thousand and twenty-four, updated all of those totals, and that is what you see there is the final list of what will be provided to the county auditor to true up our books for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. And with that, I have to try to answer any questions I can.
Any questions? Any further questions? All right. This is the public comments portion of the meeting when Miami Township residents are invited to share their thoughts with the Board. Your comments are valued and are taken into careful consideration. The Board will not engage in dialogue at this time, and presentations are limited to five minutes each. Do we have any probably here wishing to speak? We'll move on into consideration of vote of resolutions and motions. I motion to approve Resolution one-ten, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution to authorize an agreement for Chief Technology and Chief Information Security Officer Consultation Services. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution one-eleven, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution to appoint Township representatives to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Board of Directors. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution one-twelve, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution to appoint Township representatives to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission Technical Advisory Committee. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution one-thirteen, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution to appoint a Miami Township Community Improvement Corporation Board Member. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution one-fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution to authorize the Township Administrator to enter into a joint construction agreement with the City of Miami'sburg for the resurfacing of Township's streets. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
I motion to approve Resolution 115, 2024, a resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute an Edge program project agreement with Montgomery County for the utilization of Edge funding. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
I motion to approve Resolution 116, 2024, a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District for the Austin East Project Number 117. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
I motion to approve Resolution 117, 2024, a resolution to authorize an agreement for professional engineering services for the Kingsridge Drive Improvement Project. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
I motion to approve Resolution 118, 2024, a resolution to approve a final amendment to the American Rescue Plan Fund appropriation. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
I motion to approve Resolution 119, 2024, a resolution to adjust balances in the established capital projects funds. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
I motion to approve Resolution 119, 2024, a resolution to the estimated revenues and appropriations of funds for 2024. Can I get a second?
I have that as 120, 24. Did I read that wrong?
120, 24. Did I skip one?
I think you duplicated 119.
Okay, are we done then?
We have one more.
I motion to approve Resolution 120, 2024, a resolution to the estimated revenues and appropriations of funds for 2024. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
We do not have any public hearings tonight. Department heads, Assistant Chief McCarty, do you have any comments?
No, sir, no comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Director Joshua Eckert.
I have two comments, Board, for tonight. First off, I would like to thank specifically the Board for supporting Public Works with the American Rescue Plan funding this year and last year. That's a lot of capital investment, whether it's parks, actual equipment, or road resurfacing that is going back into the community. So I do appreciate that support. I would also like to thank the department heads and the township administrator who have also helped us allocate the ARP funds and also on a lot of the other projects that we have. So that's, that's my first comment, Board. My second comment is I would like to recognize to the Board our new street supervisor, Junior Cope. While he is new to this position, he is not new to the township. He is a seventeen-year seasoned employee who started out in the Road Department and worked his way up to Road Foreman and now the Street Supervisor. And if I may, Junior has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication, leadership skills, and a deep understanding of our operations at Public Works. In this role, he will oversee street maintenance projects, manage crews, and ensure safety and efficiency across all tasks. This promotion reflects his hard work, commitment to excellence, and readiness to take on greater responsibilities. He is enrolled with the Ohio Public Service Institute, which is a three-year curriculum that has a hyper-focus on service excellence, personal supervisory skills, and leadership development. Junior is also involved with the American Public Works Association, Ohio Chapter, and the Public Works officials of Southwest Ohio. I would like to congratulate Junior on this well-deserved achievement.
Congratulations, and we can call you Junior, right? Okay, all right, congratulations.
That's his name. Thank you, Board. I have no further comments for 2024.
Okay, thank you. Community Development Director Alex Carlson.
I have no comments tonight, Board. Thank you.
And Finance Director Clay McCord.
I have nothing further either, sir.
And Administrator Chris Snyder.
Good evening, Board. I do just have a few comments to go over tonight. One, I wanted to recognize a number of our employees. You hear a lot these days about people bouncing from job to job or not wanting to stay in a, in a career for very long. But we did take it on this year to recognize a number of our employees who have stuck with it for a long time, both with the township and in this career. We had several employees that were recognized for five years of service this year, including Ethan Benz, Andrew Cable, Bobby Johnson, Erica Priest, and Tyler Wilson. John Brun, Betty Eldridge, and John Taylor celebrated ten years with Miami Township this last year. And then Sean Todd celebrated fifteen years with Miami Township this year. Coming up next year, we're also looking forward to Sergeant Paul Neenhouse, Officer Danielle Schweickert, and Officer Brandon Young, who will be celebrating twenty-five years with Miami Township. So we appreciate those employees and the long service and dedication they've provided to our community. So I'm also pleased to announce the 2024 Holiday Lights winner at this time. The winner of our $50 Home Depot gift card this year is Michael Kugel at 6309 Seven Pines Drive. I want to congratulate them. I know our Communications Manager Jill Drury already has that information out. I believe has been in contact with the winner so they can enjoy their gift card this year. We congratulate them and everyone else who participated in this year's holiday lighting contest. So with that, again, I'd just like to thank all of the employees. You saw just a sample tonight of the number of things that our employees are working on day in and day out, and every week and month. We've had a lot of activity this year and a lot of projects and done a lot of good work out in the community. And as Mr. Schweickert noted, we've gotten a lot of funds back into the community, and you'll be seeing more of those improvements next year as the weather warms up and we're able to get more paving done and more improvements into the park system. So again, just like to thank everyone for all their hard work this year, but particularly all the department heads and all the employees that do all these projects every day. So again, thank you, Board. Thank you for your support and all the work that we've been doing this year, so.
Yeah, I feel a little left out. This is going to be my five-year anniversary as well. I'll suffer through that.
We'll make a note, Jill. Get a...
Mr. Matthews?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah, I want to echo Mr. Snyder's comments that it's always nice to appreciate what our workers do. Mr. Schweickert, calling out Mr. Cope. Appreciate learning more about what you've done and the excellence and expertise you've brought to the township. It's, it's always exciting to get a little more detail behind what we don't see every day, even as trustees. So I really appreciate the opportunity to learn about that. As Mr. Snyder noted, job consistency is not a regular thing. I was excited to hear about the rest of those employees. And again, Chief Stegelmeyer, forty-three years in law enforcement is quite a record. So it was an enjoyable day. And again, as just to echo Mr. Snyder, the number of resolutions we passed today reflect a huge amount of work by staff behind the scenes and all good efforts and good expenditures of township money.
Thank you. Mr. Berry?
Junior, congratulations. I know that working in a government is not easy, especially when the three trustees, we don't get longevity. And you know, when, when these faces change and a lot of times directions change between towns. So it's a great testament to the employees that are here in this country for the time that they have. If that's the new dynamic that they have, it's important that we're trying to add. So I have to see.
All right, we have one work session tonight. And I will now motion to enter into a work session to discuss the natural gas aggregation supplier agreement. We'll be moving to the side room. You are welcome to join us and listen in on the session. If any action is to be taken following the work session, we will come back here to the Board chambers for deliberation and vote on any motions or resolutions. I now motion to, no, so.
I will second the motion to go into work session.
Thank you.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Aye.